Okay, everybody. Good morning. Welcome staff meeting Tuesday, July 22nd. Manager Schultz, take it away.
Two things today. First off, Mr. Packers going to talk about flooding history, regulations, stormwater management in Sedgwick County. And then secondly, and probably more minor, Dr. Stedman is back today, and I might have Andrew Dilts just give the commission update on exactly where we're at with architectural work and the process with Regional Forensic Science Center for Commission to to talk about. So we'll start off with Lynn and his team and go from there.
Hey, good morning, Lynn.
Morning, Commissionsers. For the record, my name is Lynn Packer. I'm your Director of Public Works and County Engineer. I'm here today with Susan Erllein, our Director of Environmental Resources. We're going to tag team on this presentation to talk about flooding history in Sedgwick County and our regulations and some current the status of what's going on with a SMAB. I'm going to have Susan come up and she's going to really going to get into watersheds and some information. I'm going to note that this is part of a presentation that was presented to the Board of County Commissioners back in 2018. Commissioner Howell thought it would be a good idea to bring some of this back for the current board. So what we've done is we've taken that presentation and modified it for current status and added a little bit to it at the very end.
Sometimes when I give a presentation, I ask people who lives in a watershed and maybe just a couple of hands come up. But as you can see, everybody lives in a watershed. They're like large drainage spaces. And there's one of North America. And as you can see from this, the area in here all drains down to the Gulf. And that includes Kansas. Looking closer to home at the United States has 18 major watersheds in the continental area. And you can see Kansas is divided in half there where the upper part is flowing kind of from the west into Missouri. And the purple part down below is coming from Colorado and going down to Oklahoma. You can better see that on this map of Kansas and our 12 larger watersheds here. The Smoky Hills, Celine area, that dividing line, everything north of that goes east to Missouri. And everything south of that goes down into Oklahoma. Closer to home, looking at Sedgwick County, you can see we have eight medium sized watersheds or parts thereof. And it's draining from the northwest to the southeast. And the important part here, and I'll show in the next diagram also, is that there's no real physical barriers. It's like each one of these 34 smaller watersheds is a bathtub. And the drain in the bathtub is at the south end and draining into the watershed south of that. So if you start up here and you're just going from one watershed to another to another. So what happens in a city up here is affecting everyone downstream. And sooner or later, it's the southern counties that are getting all of the floodwater. Also, what that's encountered by the rains that come in, if you have a city, you have more pavement, sidewalks, roads, the rain from that is going to drain off and take any oils, gasoline, and other things on the surface down to the rivers with them. In an undeveloped area, more of that will go into the soil and soak in. But you'll still have some runoff and any cow manure or fertilizers or anything else is also going to go down to the stream, just like fertilizers from our yards. So how does water move? In an area where you have high rainfall, the rain goes in, soaks through the ground into the water table, and the water table keeps going higher and higher. And the water table actually goes into the streams, giving them even more water. So they're getting it from the bottom and the top. And this is what you'll see in a flood environment. And a drought is the lower diagram where the water soaks in and the water table is down lower. And the stream is losing water from its bed and going down into the water below the ground. So you have two scenarios here. And what we're dealing with today is this top scenario where you have excess water coming from the ground up, coming from the sky down, feeding the rivers, and they're going to overflow their banks. Now I'm going to turn this over to Lynn to talk about history.
Okay, so now that you have an understanding of how this works, where the flooding comes from, our watersheds, we're a plain state. Everyone knows that flooding is nothing new in this area. And, you know, there's photos from 1894 and 1904 showing Main Street and Second Main there that have had significant flooding events. We have here just barely a half block to the north. We have a Orpheum Theater and where this building sits underwater. And I bring up the 1944 event because that was actually the event that was the crux for the discussions of the big ditch. The large flooding events typically occur every 10 years or so historically in this area. We had 1877, 1894, 1904, 1916, 1923. You kind of see the the history kind of going on there. And, and like I said, 1944 was really the crux that kind of, you know, really brought about some serious discussions about the big ditch and what needed to happen to protect Wichita Valley Center Park City areas, those growing areas as to what we're, what we could do to protect it. And that's where the big ditch idea came from. I will note that in 1950, we agreed to spend $20 million on 40 miles of channel and 97 miles of levees, just to put it in context of what they were looking at and what that meant to them. That $20 million investment in 1950 is $268 billion today. B with a yes, B as in billion. So it was a huge undertaking from them. And they realized at the time that they were doing this. This wasn't something that those elected officials were going to see in their time. It was something that was for the future. It was for their kids and grandkids benefit. But they knew something had to change and they'd made that dedication back then to make that investment. And we've all seen the realize the benefits of that, you know, to this day. Basically, I'll fast forward. I won't go through all the history storms. But we continue to have events until we got really to the one everyone seems to remember. And that's the Halloween flood of 1998. We got 10 to 12 inches of rain, depending on where you were at in the county. It was between 10 and 12.6 inches of rain over the weekend at Halloween weekend. It was devastating. We had one death, almost $40 million in damage, and 5,300 people were evacuated. The 10 years later, as like I said, it's kind of a repetition you'll see. We had 10.3 inch inches of rain in 24 hours. I believe that still is our record. We had $3 million in county infrastructure that was damaged significantly on our roads and bridges. We had 100 vehicles that were stranded and 114 homes damaged. Later on in 2016, we had the Mulvane flood. That was eight years after the 2008 flood. And then we had here again, the Mulvane flood that everyone remembers a lot of damage down there. But we still had a lot of rain in Derby and even up in the Cowskin Creek at 13th and 119th. So like Susan was saying, you know, everything kind of is a northwest, kind of a southeast, kind of a draw through here. So it all ends up down in Mulvane, got the crux of not only a lot of rain, but eventually all that water just made it down to them. Most recently, we've had Buckley Street, that's been in the news a lot. The city Wichita is going to spend $36 million over three years on that project there to help with the longstanding flood issues that have gone out there. I think they had already, prior to the June 3rd and June storms, they had already planned some improvements out there. But this just kind of catapulted that project into the public eye about what needs to happen and why it needs to happen. The, you know, we've been in a drought. I've been talking about that with you guys. History has shown that those large storms will continue. We get them about every 10 years or so. And it brings a lot of disruption and devastation to the area. And that's where Susan's going to come up and kind of get into a little bit of those issues of of what that flooding does to us.
You can see a list here that I think we're all familiar with, that not only do you have roads and bridges and destroyed basements flooded, homes, businesses, mold, mosquitoes love the floods because you have standing water everywhere, great breeding ground. But you also have contamination that can add to the water. And you have waste disposal problems after the fact, getting rid of everything. And water wells can be impacted. I'm not going to read all of this to you. You can read it later in your handouts. I just want to hit some highlights on these slides. Immediate threats, you could have loss of life, not only human, but cattle. Farms can be impacted, property damage, as I mentioned on the previous slide. People may have to move while all of this is happening and their homes are redone. Road closures, so you may have to find new routes to get places. And levees is another issue. The big ditch can have impact from all of this and have issues afterwards. These pictures are down in the south part of Sedgwick County. Commissioner Blue Ball, this is your area. And you can see how high the water was in a basement with all the mold growing afterwards. Look at the light switch. There gives you another idea of the water line in the basement. And, you know, it's just a horrible mess. And what do you do with all the water? And how do you get it out of the house? Have a slide on that later. Health impacts, you have waterborne diseases, vector borbs such as mosquitoes. Mental health impacts because people are really upset that all of the stuff, the baby pitchers, wedding pitchers, all of that are destroyed now and have to start over again on materials for the house. It's something that I've always found interesting. You have sub pumps in the basement to get rid of the water. Well, where does the water go? It goes on your property. So now if the ground saturated, it can't take any more water in. So now you're creating a pond on your property. You can see the water's up to her ankle right there. This again is on south hydraulic area. And over here, you can see a nice big lake forming in their property, which means you have mosquito breeding area. During these, we receive calls for the mosquito ducks, little discs that you put in the water, and it kills the larvae. So that's something you can buy at most big tool stores, big box stores. But that's an issue. And there's another issue as well, and that's algae. Fertilizer running off lawns, farm fields, everything creates algae growth. It's feeding the algae. It's food, all of the nitrogen going in. It's great. So you see regular algae here on the left. And over here on the right, that looks like you spilled green paint on the surface of the water. That's blue green algae. And that's deadly. Veterinarians have told me that people have brought in their dogs after they drink some from a river or even Lake Chinny, this blue green algae. Big dogs dead in two hours. Cattle in Lake Marion a while back, dead from drinking the water that they were provided because of the blue green algae in it. Very deadly. So there's impacts from the flood that aren't just infrastructure or homes. You have the soil erosion, taking the sediment downstream, depositing it. The erosion could interfere with levees and tear them down. It can destroy the area around dams, water pollution. You have pollutants from fertilizers, herbicides, pesticides, gasoline oils. The list can go on. Previous contaminated sites. You're also destroying ecosystems and the habitats of the wild animals. And to give you an idea, there are 56 historic landfill and dump sites in Sedgwick County. That's a lot. You have 481 known contaminated sites in Sedgwick County. 229 are still active. So there's a lot of polluted sites out there, some of them very near the surface, especially old dry cleaners and gas stations. And that can take chemicals downstream. And here's a guy on the upper right over fertilizing his lawn. Bottom right, irrigation in a farm field. And we do have CAFOs, which are cattle controlled areas. Yes, that's an acronym, C A F O. And you could just see what they're standing and imagine rain taking all of that material downstream. So you're in bacteria from the manure. So there could be a lot of pollution going down. And other issues, economic to governments, businesses and homeowners, disruption of services, like I said, a road's being closed. Long-term recovery challenges, just look down recently at Texas and what they're going through. Insurance, is it going to pay for it? And the dam and levy failures. So now you've seen some of the bad effects of flooding. Lynn's going to talk about something we've done in the past to help address this.
So just as the 44 flood was a catalyst for the discussions and getting the big ditch project take moving forward, the Halloween flood was really what did that more recently for us. And so after the Halloween flood, about discussions began about what else needs to be done. The big ditch was a huge project, but that was at that time, you know, 50 years ago. It was doing its job. We were just starting in, getting our levy accreditations working in the early 2000s. But we had other areas that needed to be addressed. And the city Wichita and Sedgwick County started these discussions. And about 2006, we had a task force that was brought together, basically with a lot of goals. Main of the main goals being a uniform standards, which is what we now know as our Stormwater Manual, that both City Wichita and Sedgwick County adhere to. Wanted to evaluate means and methods to create a regional flood control, stormwater management efforts. We started in that path, but never really fully got there. And then also to identify permanent funding. Again, that's where we, you know, fell short. Once we came down and got to the point of needing to identify that funding source. We were in a drought. There wasn't a big push for it. And we had other priorities that were pulling county funds. So we never really were able to get that dedicated funding. It also recommended the starting up this Stormwater Management Advisory Board, which did occur. Totally coincidental, but appropriately, this MAB was created on October 31st, 2007, nine years after the devastating Halloween flood. Everyone was invited to have a seat at the table. And they did operate under a initial charter. The main points of the charger of the charter that they operated under was finding a long term, a long-term funding source and prioritizing studies and projects that would be undertaken. As I noted, you know, everyone had an opportunity at the table. We didn't really quite hit that. We had a very good turnout with the cities that were really in more of the suburban urbanized areas around the city Wichita. But we really didn't get out into the county very much with a severe interest of of those communities wanting to adopt our stormwater regulations. But overall, not too bad for a first stab at the SMAB. One of the things that the SMAB did was basically conduct a survey back in 2010. And what that showed us was 90% of the respondents to that survey wanted a countywide stormwater maintenance system. They wanted to look outside of their cities that they were in. They wanted something that was more what I'm calling regional, using that word loosely. It's countywide attack to these to these issues. The also with that survey, we learned, and again, this is 15 years ago. And I realize a new study would need to be done. But at that time, and this would have been two years after the 2008 floods that were pretty devastating. There was a willingness by the respondents to have pay something towards dedicated towards stormwater funding. Back then, they talked about a dollar a month or 250 a month. And what that was something that was deemed to be reasonable as something they were overwhelmingly willing to support. Stormwater projects were also identified through the SNAB back in 2007, 2009. There are already identified 64 projects totaling $217 million. By 2017, the number of projects had shot up to 78 and was over $550 million in funding. They also, during the time this MAB was organized, they completed two watershed studies. One for the West Branch Chisholm Creek and the other one for the Spring Creek Basin. Additional to that was they came up with a Stormwater Management Flood Ranking, Project Ranking, as well as a cost benefit analysis that could be done. And I tell you this just because this MAB that was previously formed before it was on hiatus really did a lot of the groundwork and and that work is not for naught. It is something that we can continue on and take off of. Projects have been identified. We need to update those lists. Some some communities like Derby has already undertaken some of those projects. So we need to update that list. But we have a method and a means to evaluate those projects. And we have a way to look at the cost benefit analysis and conduct that analysis, I should say. You know, what, you know, really comes down to, you know, what's next? Really, what's next is something I've talked to each one of you about, and that is funding. We never had that dedicated funding. And we've learned from other communities, if you don't have dedicated funding, it's not going to go anywhere and you're not going to have a lasting effect on your communities. The what we've done so far and what we're recommending is to work with our MPDES Phase 2 communities. For those of you that don't understand, that's the National Pollutant Discharge Elimination System. That's our MS4 permit. Scott's talked to you guys about that here recently. That is going to be those that are Phase 2 communities have yearly reporting that they have to make the KDHE and have to obtain a permit from them so they can discharge their waters. And that's a requirement that's been around since the early 2000s. And this area is when the Central County, a lot of the surrounding communities got brought into Phase 2. A lot of our smaller communities, the Chinys, the Mount Hopes, Andals, those are not Phase 2 communities, do not have those same requirements yet. They should be monitoring and adopting regulations, but they're not required to do an annual reporting. They're not required to do public awareness campaigns like we are. The the, oh, the most important thing I was going to note is really in addition to communicating with those communities, trying to get them on board with the regulations, is to identify a funding source and reinitiate the stat, this map. I don't think those are mutually exclusive or in that order because I really do think this MAB needs to get back together to really have all the communities in that discussion about what that's going to look like. A lot of the communities since 2018 have now adopted some type of funding mechanism for stormwater within their cities. So how do we go about getting dedicated funding for these projects without disrupting their efforts within the cities? The idea would be that anything we would undertake out in the county and around the county would supplement those internal city efforts. Most of the cities have a very small amount of money that they're bringing in. Derby, for example, a city of the first class in their own right. They bring in about, I think it's just about $350,000 a year, not a huge amount that they're bringing in. The city Wichita is a little different. They have an ER, they have a fee program set up on equivalent residential units. They bring in a little bit more money. But a lot of the communities are doing something. They've recognized that something needs to be done and they're working on it. But they're working on it within their corporate limits. And that's what they're doing right now. And we've kind of shown, I think what Susan has shown and we've talked about is is that flooding is really a regional issue. It's a countywide issue. It's something that's expensive and it's disruptive. And we've been shown through history, it's going to happen again. The question really comes down to what are we going to do to lessen those impacts in the future? And we're here to answer any questions, have a discussion that you might have.
Lynn, Susan, thank you. And I appreciate you also coming to Sedgwick County Association of Cities last meeting that was in Derby and presented this. There was really pretty robust discussion and a lot of interest of what's going on. I will open it up for questions. I guess my first question to kind of set the tone is, are what you requesting out of the gate is just a reinstatement of the SMAB? And then all these other things will be worked through those discussions? Is that?
Yeah, I will say the one thing that hasn't been, that's been talked about on a separate format that I'll mention here is we've all talked about it with you guys. And that is we are going to update our stormwater resolution. Part of that is because we have a census update. We need to, we're referencing the wrong census year. We need to update that. That's a requirement. But the other thing we want to do is, and that this is going to come before you here at the end of July, actually, beginning of August, they'll be on agenda, is to make a slight one sentence modification that's going to have a major impact on our regulations. And that is to make the regulations countywide in the unincorporated sections of the county. Right now, the regulations are limited to the urbanized areas around the cities. And it doesn't apply to that unincorporated areas. So we've talked to you. We've got a general understanding that that's something you guys support. So we're going to bring that resolution before you here in the next month to have our regulations now update for the census, but also to apply our regulations for stormwater quality and quantity throughout the entire unincorporated area of the county. And then we're going to talk to the cities again about adopting those resolutions. One of the things that Scott has come up with and we've talked to KDHE about, and they are on board with this, is we can help those communities. It's, you know, the Goddards, the Coal witches, the Mazes of the world that are smaller. We can help them with their permit. They're currently paying an engineer or a consultant to do that permit every year. We can help them with that. We can also share some of our credits we get through HHW and through our campaigns we run, social media campaigns. We can give them those credits and apply those to help them out. So that'll be a help for them. But we really need to have more of the cities on board with these regulations. And it's just so all the developers, all contractors are going to operate under this.
I guess the question on that is I guess the question on that is that the recreation of the SMAB, the first step in that process?
I do think that yes, I think this, the, I brought that up because the resolution is the first step. And then I do believe reinstating the SMAB is going to be the next step. Because really anything we do funding-wise moving forward really needs to be a discussion with all those communities.
Other questions?
Right, sir.
Lynn, thank you for the presentation. So help me understand some of the funding options. My, I first went to say, well, we do this, the waste fee on properties on each.
So there are a couple of options that have been pursued. Back when SMAB was first organized, there was discussions about property tax, sales tax and some type of a fee, like a stormwater fee or a solid waste fee. We understand property tax is a non-negotiable item right now. There has been talk about sales tax, but we also understand that we have communities out there that already have a pretty good sales tax hit and selling a sales tax increase to them may be difficult. I've had that discussion with Derby. They're not totally out of that discussion, but they do recognize that there are, because of their own tax, sales tax initiatives, that would hit them pretty hard. So what we really have concentrated on, but again, needs to be a discussion amongst all the communities. We're thinking some type of a fee, whether that be an equivalent residential unit or like some type of a.
Solid waste fee, well, that's what. So if we, well, I'm jumping to the conclusion here. Let's say we assume that I see that the dollar, dollar a month was back, that's a 2010 survey. So let's just say we took a, a solid waste fee approach and said $10 on the properties. Which would be about that. But would that interfere, does Dirt, would that interfere with what Derby's doing with raising theirs 200,000 or 300,000 and?
So straight out applying a fee exactly the way the solid waste is, yes, that would, that would basically say, hey, we're going to pay the, I think they do a stormwater utility in Derby, and then we would hit them with this county stormwater fee that way. So we would.
It's on their utility bills.
I believe that's how they do it in Derby. I think Goddard does it a little bit differently, but yeah, we would need to figure a way so that, like I said, this is meant to supplement those efforts and not in any way thwart those efforts that they're doing inside of the county or inside of those cities. So we need to have some discussions about how that can be done.
Well, then I just one comment and then I'll enough, but I, in the totally different venue though, I think if we had some kind of revenue fee, like your, or revenue source, like you're saying, I've seen like in, saw a presentation, this is in the passenger rail world up in Minnesota, the Twin Cities. There, there are five counties around Minneapolis, St. Paul. They, they voted for like a quarter cent sales tax for transportation and included expanding their light rail or whatever rail. And what happens is if you have a state, in that case, under the FRA and federal, if, when you apply for grants, if the federal departments already know that you have a source to do your participation or your, then, then it's an easier one for them to say, it's not, not a one-time. Let's say we get a project now, a federal project approved by Davenport to help us. Well, we may have to, our match might be a million dollars on a hundred million or whatever project it is.
You already got a dedicated funding.
We have to battle through landfill. But if we already have a set stream, then the feds recognize that and say, okay, well, you're already committed to that and it doesn't end, it's over time.
Very good point.
Your grant application has become very, much, much easier. They, the Minneapolis-St. Paul, as a matter of fact, up there, they had five counties, I said, four counties voted for it. One county did not. So there, if you look, their spider for light rail goes to all the four counties that supported it. And the one that didn't is not getting, not getting the.
So that's a very good point, yes.
Sure.
Because that, we do foresee that in the future, SMAB would be helping us go out for federal dollars as, as appropriate.
Sure.
Yeah, thank you, Chairman. Again, I want to start off by just saying that don't confuse this, anybody who's listening. Don't confuse this with the stream maintenance budget that we have. It's a different, but some kind of related topic, so I don't want to get too confused.
Related but unrelated, yes.
That's right. And I think, you know, Derby, meaning I think Wichita does this, you talk about ER use, I think Derby follows the same type of, I'm actually, I'm actually wrong about that. I think residential, it's like $3 per residence per month on the water bills, how they do that. I believe that's correct. Yeah, $3. So it's each residence is like $36 a year, if I'm remembering correctly. My wife pays the bill some more, exactly, sure, but. But in my church, my church being it, because it's a fee, not a property tax, the church that I go to has a very large parking lot. They also have retention pond that was required under their plat. And so they actually, you know, manage the water on their, on their property quite well. Actually, it's been a benefit to people down the stream. But despite that fact, because they have a large parking lot, they've also paid a very large fee. It's very expensive. I mean, I don't remember the exact number, like a couple thousand a year. It's pretty expensive. But anyway, I may be off a little bit on some of that detail there. But what Derby spends their money primarily on, on stream maintenance, if I understand correctly, they do a lot of Spring Creek work and things like that up and down. But I'm not sure how much, how much of that money goes to infrastructure. I don't know, I'm not sure that's the same pot of money. But having said that, I think Wichita, Wichita does also charge an ERU, an ERU fee. So explain that to me. So if you have a, a small parcel with very little concrete versus a large parcel, a lot of concrete or if it's commercial, how, how does that change for each property?
That's where I wish I had Scott Lynda back here, our stormwater manager. He's on a much, well-deserved vacation and I stood in for him. He was going to be up here. He understands that because that was developed when he was their stormwater manager. My understanding of it is basically what they've done is they've taken property, whether it's commercial, industrial or residential, and they have an equivalent residential unit they've broken it down to and said, okay, your size for what you have, this is equivalent to two and a half residential units on a typical quarter acre, you know, lot or something like that. And they, they've broken everything down and their fee structure is based on breaking it down. So if you own an acre of land in the city of Wichita, that's going to be probably four equivalent residential units. And then the fee is, and they charge their fee based on that. And that's how they bring it in. We would need to do something. I think we end up probably some places going to be a little bit of a hybrid. We have the solid waste fee, but just as we've did with the fee, it's not going to be the same fee, whether you're industrial, a park, or, you know, a residential unit or, or commercial. I think the same thing, whether you have, you know, we're going to deal with ag land, we're going to deal with developed properties. Those have two separate impacts on the stormwater and we need to consider that.
I would, I would probably disagree with a little bit about, about re-establishing the SMAB as a first step. I think, I think we have to find out, do we have the appetite to do something for revenue stream? Because really the SMAB was just, they did a great job. They came back to the commission, just were not, they were not willing to go forward. I, I would just say this, that, you know, the public likes good government that is, that's thoughtful and provides the services that they want. When they see this type of flooding, they throw their hands up and they say they, they can't fix it on their own. They need the government to do something that's much larger than their own property. The government's the right, is the right, you know, level of solution to a regional problem like flooding. But they want us to do something. And so I, I think at the end of the day, what, what I would like to see us do is to look at a fee, like an ERU type of fee, but have it voter approved. And now is that possible to have it on a ballot? In other words, rather than us making a executive decision as well, as a, as a board decision here, can we put that in front of the people and have them agree or disagree to support a fee?
Commissioner Howell, Justin Wagner, County Counselor, we could look into that further. I don't, I know it's been several years, I think nearly a decade since this was looked at seriously by the board. And I know there was a number of options considered and discussed at that point. We can research that further and get back to the board.
I, I think that as long as people have a chance to vote on this, again, if they vote no, then when the flood happens, we can remind them that they voted no. If they vote yes, then those fees are something they, they wanted this type of government solution for. They, they value this enough that they want to support that. I think having voter approval is key here. And to me, that, we weren't, we didn't discuss that in 2018. This was not part of the discussion. We looked at sales tax and property tax and, and I think we were not really willing to go down any of those paths. The other, the other concern, I just want to just stress here, this map, this idea of, of essentially asking for stormwater projects to be defined by cities a, as well as the county to go on the same list. The idea I think was that we would essentially weight those on how many people would benefit and the costs. So there's like a cost benefit analysis, if you will. And they would prioritize those from top to bottom and they would simply look at the revenue that came in. If it was a county, a county-like project, we could fund that through this, through this fund. But if it impacted the city, the city would have some obligation to pay for portions of that. It wasn't just free money to the city. It was, it was essentially there to incentivize them to partner with us and make this a little softer for them to, to make a decision to improve their city. They have some responsibility to pay for it. And I think in doing that, if they have a stormwater fee or whatever it's that they've got, they could use their revenue as their share of that fund, or they could bond it, or they could cash fund that, however they want to do it. They have a lot of options on their side, but it wasn't going to be free money to the city. They still had some obligation. Otherwise, it made, made it easier for them to move forward, but it wasn't like it's a, you know, if it was 100% paid for by this, like by this fund, a lot of these cities might decide to, to reduce their fees, thinking this was a displacement, if you will, of what they were already doing. This is not the intent at all, is to incentivize them to move forward. If you, if you look at the collective cost of all the stormwater projects needed in this county, it's, it's north of, it's north of a billion dollars. It may be several billion dollars. And so the point, I mean, the spring water, the spring creek watershed study by itself was over a billion, just to do that one. And so start thinking about all the things in this county that are needed. If you, so what I would just say is if we had a fee idea, can we at least put together a proposal that says, here's what we think is reasonable? And we have kind of agreed, this is what we would like to see us do. And the idea is if we know how much, how many, how many dollars we're, we're going to generate, then we can come up with a, you know, a, an example of how this would be used with cities. I think that data is important to see for those people from the community that support us even going forward. Because if there's no appetite for this commission put in front of, in front of the people, if there's a, you know, the people we, if our constituents are immediately, they're not interested in, in doing this. We can gauge political response, if you will, then this is going to kill it like it did in 2018. We've done this over and over and over again. So starting this map, it's exasperating. They have lots and lots of good meetings. They do great work, but then we can't get the, the revenue piece is just, it just kills it every time. So I would respectfully disagree. I think our, our, our next best step is to come up with a proposal that we think is reasonable and ask our cab boards or ask the collaboration board or ask communities to weigh in a little bit and put it in front of the people, see if they're support, if we think they're support. I, I think we ought to, at least me, and that should be, my opinion, voter approval. We never, we never talked about voter approval, other than a sales tax.
And I think if we find, regardless of what Justin was able to find on, on ability to put on a ballot, one, one thing we can definitely do relatively easy is put together another survey and really, and utilize the cabs as well and try to, and get feedback that way to get a, some type of an idea of the appetite for a fee for this.
And also for a reminder, Johnson County, I think they started their, their 0.25% sales tax like in 1980s sometime. It was a long time ago. And they generate incredible amount of, I mean, they generate like $50 million a year or something. It's a lot of money anymore. And for all, all that money goes into stormwater infrastructure. They have a very robust revenue stream. Even if we did like, you know, one mil, we're talking, you know, roughly $7 million. So we're not even in the, we're not comparable to what they're doing up there. And so if you look at a, a ERU type of fee, I'd like to at least know what, you know, if the fee was, you know, put together an idea, how much money are we talking about that's available coming into that fee if we, if we set it up a certain way? I, I think we need to see this, see some data like that.
And really, we've run some numbers, but it really comes down to how do we treat those cities without any type of a stormwater fee versus those cities with a stormwater fee? If we, if we looked at just the unincorporated areas of the county, I think a, I think we ran it as a, did you run it as a $2 equivalent or $1 equivalent? And it was a $2 equivalent, Scott rented that. And if we looked at just the unincorporated portion of the county, we were looking at getting, I think it was one to $2 million a year. If we included the cities and supplemented, we were up to the $10 million a year. So it comes down to, and that's why I somewhat proposed the idea. I think we have a funding issue we need to address as well as the SMAB issue. And one of those happen, you know, with the funding first and then SMAB or SMAB and the funding. I do think it's important to get all those communities together to just talk about what that looks like for their communities and how we can do it so it supplements and doesn't override what they're doing.
Well, with the ongoing discussion of shared services and partnerships and collaboration, this is exactly the type of thing we agree.
Other questions? Lynn, Susan, thank you. So we'll wait on you for next action set.
Oh, next, the next action item will definitely will be, is going to be the resolution. It's going to be for you here in the front office.
We'll wait, okay. Thank you, guys.
Very good, thank you.
Andrew will give us an update on regional forensic technicality center planning.
Hi, Andrew.
Good morning, Chairman and Commissioners. Andrew Dills, Director of Facilities. So real quick, just wanted to let you know, we presented on forensic science, the CIP here a couple of weeks ago at staff meeting. We have had some continual conversations with the architect firm just to kind of firm up what we're doing as far as the remodel scope of work goes at the existing location. And we're basically done at this point. So the work on the CIP is basically at a halt. It's at a standstill until there's a budget, a budget in August for you guys to approve the CIP plan, which has just over 1.2 million in A&E design for 2026 and just over 19 million for construction in 2027. Stand for any questions.
Okay. And Dr. Sedman's here also. If there's any specific questions, we can always turn to her or Rusty's here as well. Any questions?
Just, I'm trying to, I'm trying to absorb what you just said. So the work's been done already?
No, 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 I'm, I'm sorry. When, when we put together a CIP for you guys to approve, we sit down with an architect firm and we kind of talk through the scope of work and try to firm up our numbers on what the project's going to cost. Some of those conversations have continued because I wanted to try to firm up our $4 million, our estimate to remodel the existing building. And so we've, we've outlined that and we've narrowed that scope a little bit more. My, my intention was to try to reduce that cost by having those, those continued conversations. But our estimate's basically the same. It's not being reduced at all. So the work now is at a halt. Nothing's been designed.
So the 1.2 million for the, the 2026 budget, none of that's been spent at this point?
None of that's been spent.
Again, I'm not, just to be clear, I'm not against a solution to happen sooner than later. I'm just not sure that that's the right location for me. So I'm just looking at, trying to find out if I, if I want to spend the money on that location. I think we ought to be looking at to see some other options in the area. It might be just a maybe different way to go. So we'll spend, I'm hoping we'll maybe spend the money at the appropriate time, but maybe in a different direction is my, is my, is my thought at least.
Okay. Have a thoughts? So we, the next step here is we adopt CIP. This is part of the CIP or we amend the CIP or we remove the CIP? What is this?
And, and maybe Lindsay can speak to this because we hadn't approved CIP to expand there already.
Ready for me to talk?
Yes.
So we do have an existing CIP project that had a project authorization done. And it's important to remember those project authorizations because that's basically what tells our credit rating agencies and any issuers, or I'm sorry, we're the issuer, anyone who's going to give us the money, what our intent is. So we did a project authorization to expand the building at its current location. We know that that is no longer a possibility. So basically we're spending money for the next CIP project from the old CIP project. Because the scope of the work is changing, we cannot proceed with doing full-fledged design and construction on the new site or on the new plan until you all adopt a CIP. And that would begin January 1 of next year. We would bring, just like everything. We would bring, just like everything else, any other project that's in the queue for bond funding, we would bring to you a project authorization at the same time we bring roads and bridges and say, we want to start doing work on these things. We want to start spending money and telling people that we're going to bond fund and reimburse ourselves for those costs down the road. So that part would happen earlier in the year, of course, then there's always any potential construction bids that have to go out and come back to you through bid board. And there's any number of reasons this will come back before you over the course of the years. But I think the the scope of the project, the dollars associated with the project are based on it being on the current campus and expanding.
So I'm I'm not trying to overread the room, but I think I've heard from my colleagues that I, everybody believes that we've got to do something. We have have a fiscally conservative director over there who doesn't ask for a lot, but when she she's telling us we have urgency, not using terms, using terms that she's never used before as like we're borderline in compliance, like we, this community needs us, justice needs us, this is a big deal. So I'm happy to have these conversations. I just want to have a sense of urgency in what we're doing for the community and all the work that happens over there. We're talking about an incremental scope of services to to add this project. This is a second building that'll be in proximity of the current building that has a lot of services. If we're moving the entire complex, have we given thought to what a brand new RFC K would be and what that would cost? And if we're moving the morgue and we're moving all of these things, I mean, have we given any, we got twenty million dollars to move some of these services over to a new building. Is this a forty, fifty, sixty million dollar project if we're moving the entire thing somewhere?
Go ahead.
That's something we can easily put together. I mean, we have the square footage and we can put a, we can put a remodel cost to that if if we're doing a remodel. If we're doing a new build, we can put that cost to that.
I just think that that, I would like to know that that information sooner than later. I I'm supportive of this, where we're the plan moving forward, but I I'm also happy to entertain and vet out everything that needs to happen to make sure we get something across the finish line. I I publicly said that I'm very interested in what goes in a new com care crisis, or I'm sorry, new com care campus. I'm interested in looking at the old Riverside Hospital. I think that the opportunity to do a com care campus and we have aging, we have CDDO, and we have opportunities with the state and some crisis stabilization beds. I think there's an opportunity there. But if we're moving everything for the forensic science center, and I want to know what that cost looks like and what this.
I can just tell you that those those are not going to be admin type of costs. Those are going to be higher square foot.
Keenly aware.
Because of the intricacies of what they have in that.
So what I would want to know.
I'd be the new construction of three hundred fifty.
No. It'll be higher.
Well, I think that's the conversation that I think we need to under, know and understand and vet out internally and publicly is we need to understand what that looks like to move the whole thing. I have concerns obviously about abandoning a campus over there. We have KU Med getting ready to move out a portion of it. We have our health department over there. We already have one building over there. There's sunk cost into that building. It's a principle economically that makes a lot of sense for the county. We've sunk a lot of money into that over there. So I need to understand these things before we make some decisions. And I I hate to put a sense of urgency to it, but I feel like we need to know something quickly. Because we're passing a budget in forwards.
Adoption, we will need to have, we will need to know what CIP to include.
Okay.
And what that includes.
I think what we can do is we can put some numbers to, if you're, if you're talking about moving the entire regional forensic science center with the new addition, moving that, we can put some numbers together of what that would look like. I mean, they, they would be estimated cost. We can come back to you with what that would look like for a brand new facility or a remodel facility.
Okay.
I don't know if you have the facility in mind.
I do. I don't know what anybody else thinks, but that's the idea I have.
So, I mean, that's.
But I I want to know what that that cost looks like. I'm priority number one for me is getting forensic science center and all the work they do there and all the programming they do there at an efficient level. I think that happens with the 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 annex that we're building, the second building over there. But I want to make sure, and I want to make sure that we have the capacity and I don't know if we have the appetite to spend fifty million dollars on a new build for this purpose, knowing we have com care campus coming, knowing there's other opportunities. So these are the numbers that I want to make sure. And we got four weeks to figure this out. So. Rusty?
And there's a difference between attaching estimated numbers and truly evaluating a specific facility to determine whether it will meet the needs. It can be retrofitted and modified to meet the needs of that type of special. We can throw numbers at it, but until we get in the space and determine the true viability of retrofitting and making it work, that's another. I don't want to just basket of, we think it's going to cost this amount of money and then be disappointed because it's much higher or because it just doesn't.
Keenly aware. Thoughts?
Well, just since you mentioned that, Chairman, let's throw out there again, I think we've had a long desire to do something with our public health department. I think there's a possibility that might be something we could talk about with the same you will, if you wanted to go in that direction, maybe make those in the same facility, but not the same entrance, but the same same building. And there was also a thirty one million dollar estimate for the com care campus discussion. As you know, it's on the CIP right now. It's been discussed. And so if that was something that we were going to go down that path at some point, sorry, add all this, all this money together, we're talking about two hundred thousand square foot building. We we have some options at that level of spending to do some different things, I think, that not make this more viable. So I'd I'd like to just maybe look at, you know, comprehensively, what else would be, we use that space for, if that was the right place to go.
Okay. I I just, I I think we're moving into some numbers here. We have an admin building out there too. So we're moving into some numbers here. Listen, I'm, when I saw twenty million dollars to add on, I gulp to. And so I need to help understanding the community benefit of what this looks like and what we are losing now. My point in all of this is I think that if we take it all and move it elsewhere, it's going to be well north of twenty million dollars is. So that that's what I'm trying to understand with the sunk cost being abandoned that we have in that campus over there now. So I it's just a lot of big discussions happening. I want to make sure we have all the information to make them.
So to Rusty's point, he is correct. If you're looking at a retrofitted building, you want to make sure that that fits. So typically, when we do that, we're under a purchase agreement when we go in and do due diligence. Obviously, if we're talking about the Riverside Hospital, we're not under a purchase agreement. We did do a building assessment back in twenty twenty one. So we can refer back to that building assessment because I'm not, I don't know if any work has been done, but we can refer back to that building assessment.
Yeah, I understand these.
We also had Pulse Design Group, you know, review the building for the mental health hospital. So we can refer to those items. We can use Schaefer Johnson. Schaefer Johnson is what's, who is reviewing the current Regional Forensic Science Center for the ambition. We can do our best to look at those reports and review that for Regional Forensic Science Center, if that would be a fit. Also, the health department and com care to see if we could put some numbers together. I think the question is going to be, is it going to be a fit? How much are we going to have to get that building to, you know, current building code? I mean, when I, we look through the building, there were quite a few things that have to be conditioned to make it a building that will consume. So those are the things that we'll have to look at.
Well, I I I mean, I, I want to be very, very clear. I want, I think there's opportunities with some buildings in the community to consolidate some departments. I have never considered the forensic science center in part of that discussion because I was, we were going to make the investment on that campus. But I, before we sign the budget, I want to make sure that all the discussions were had publicly, that we vetted every single opportunity to the best of our ability and made a sound decision. And whether forensic science goes that direction or not, I I'm still very interested in collaborating and consolidating departments into one space and renovating our current building that's vacant in our community to do it. I just, the question is, with the topic at hand, the forensic science center, is it best over there, the investment, or best riding with a bunch of other things and a bigger investment? And that's before we make the decision, I just want to vet it.
Yeah, two things. First of all, there's two portions to the CIP with Regional Forensic Science Center. There was a piece in twenty twenty six and then a larger piece in twenty twenty seven. So the decision point for the commission on eight, on August twenty coming up here is the twenty twenty six portion. Help, help me out on it.
Sure. So this is this in the last couple of years, we've moved away from the way we historically did bond funded projects where we would have one wholesale number in a given year. And our municipal advisor and our bond counsel basically told us we were basically putting it out to credit rating agencies and everybody else that we were going to do this bond sale in the year in which the project is funded. And we were making ourselves look bad and running into some potential problems with IRS rules because of how we were advertising it. So what we do now is in the funding plan, we show how that will look, that we're going to spend one part of the money in year one and then do construction in year two, so that we're more appropriately setting that. But at the time we do the project authorization, we will ask them to approve the whole amount. So it's more just communicating out to outside people and it creates confusion. And I know and I'm sorry and I wish I had a better way, but that's, that's what we try to do.
The point of decision on August twenty is the whole
Correct.
Thing.
All twenty.
So when I hear commission say, and I know we've all been solicit about Riverside over and over, but I hear commission say a potentially different campus for Regional Forensic Science Center, I assume the commission means anything within the community that makes sense to the fact. I don't know that we're fixated on the building. You're you're open for any suggestion
Yeah.
in the community.
I am, and I think the community would demand that we be open to any suggestion throughout the community. I I do think that there is a unique opportunity possibly over there. We've already done a lot of research and a lot of work. I think the community wants to see that building filled. And again, my track has always been com care campus and and investigating that. If that's not the best deal for the community, I'm, I'm easy to pass on that.
So there's, there's a couple of options on acquisition of building. One is to put an RFP out. And Lindsay has mentioned this many times, there has to be a funding component to go with that. The second thing is to put our our on-call realtor to work and start researching what's out there. I assume the commissioner wants, the commissioners want to keep an open mind
Absolutely.
to anything in the community. And I, and I think your, your point of decision and what I was hoping for today is on Regional Forensic Science Center, is it, is it the current campus or we really seriously want to look at an external campus to that? And and maybe meld it with something else.
My mind has always been the current campus, that I know that we've had discussions about potentially other options. I just want to vet those out before the decision day comes.
Okay.
To be perfectly clear, I think the plan we're working with forensic science center and the campus we have at the health department and what could be coming from KU Med over there, I think is the best plan. I just want to make sure. But that's where my head is at. That's where I want to go. And I want to look at com care campus and aging and CDDO and maybe other functions and crisis stabilization. I want to look at that at some separately. These are two separate projects for me. But there is discussion that this could be one big project and I want to make sure that we, everybody gets their answers before we vote.
Chairman, I think I'm in agreement with you probably about ninety percent. I just, I want to have the public discussion and and I want to show the public that we've looked at all the alternatives.
Oh, absolutely.
I don't want to leave any, any stone unturned. So what, what, what's the amount of investment?
On forensic science? Yep. And there's four weeks to do it. I'm kind of joking, but I well, I know that there's a, there's a, there's two deadlines. One of them is a hard deadline in regards to the CIP and budget. But there is a practical deadline in this community is we've got to get this forensic science center, the resources they need to do the work that they do. We have to do this and this has to be an urgency. And I feel like the commission, my read on the commission is that everybody's there. I just know that we need to publicly vet some things and publicly discuss some things and I think you should.
I I want to throw out one more question. It's a little bit off topic, but is there any, you know, this can cost us quite a bit. Is there any we've capture opportunities from users and fees or anything like that? Or is it something that we're just going to continue to be?
Are you talking specifically about regional forensic? Shelley, you want to?
Dr. Stedman, would you come up? They they capture as many revenues as they
She does.
Right now beyond the requirements that we're just going to do, but I'll let her speak to the specifics.
Ellie Stedman, Director of the Regional Forensic Science Center, and we do generate revenue by providing autopsy services to other jurisdictions. So we currently serve the thirteenth, we, we it's a, it's a little more complicated than counties because some of the judicial districts have multiple counties. Butler County is a single county jurisdiction. So pretty much every county that touches Sedgwick County, we are providing services to. The issue with expanding those services is that under our current name accreditation for the medical and medical legal death investigation, we are right in the exactly where we should be with the number of autopsies that each of our pathologists is allowed to perform. And so expanding to areas beyond the counties that we're already serving would probably cost another doctor. And they're very expensive and they're also very hard to find. A forensic pathologist are extremely rare. Some of you may remember, we waited over two years to get our last one when Jamie Oberst retired. And so that puts a lot of stress on the two people who are left there to do all of the work because people don't stop dying and we have to, we have to manage those cases. So there is always a chance to expand the services, but you have to invest in the physicians who can do that work.
Let me just add on to that, Shelley, before you go. Morgue aside, is there anything, currently you're providing services, all the other forensic services, the criminal justice side of this equation to all the cities in Sedgwick County, City Wichita, is that where?
Yeah, that, that, that's where my question was going. Tom is, the the feedback I get is from law enforcement and pushing this. And I'm like, okay, well, how are, how are you guys helping us to pay for this? Is what I'm trying to better understand.
We have a fee schedule for our forensic science services as well. But that's for out of county. Again, that's out of county services. We don't charge fee, there's no fee for service for any municipality that is in Sedgwick County.
Okay, that's. Thank you.
And we do have the opportunity to provide forensic services oftentimes, for example, drive driver cases. The problem is we have a backlog and it's inappropriate to take out of county cases and generate revenue while you've got Sedgwick County cases waiting to be worked and charged.
Um, if we don't charge anything, is is there I guess a aircraft worker, like an AOG or or something to accelerate a case, you know, where where someone's trying to get, is there any kind of priority or is it just, you just take a ticket and you wait in line?
Threat to public safety.
Okay.
So if you have a serial rapist and you bring us a case, you will have somebody working overnight until that case goes into CODA since sees if we can get a hit. But and our drug cases, sometimes they're, they're prioritized all the time. Every agency manages that differently. And I think that you will find with law enforcement here in Sedgwick County, if they need a case prioritized, they make a phone call and it happens.
But one DUI is going to be just this treated as any other, anything, as long as it's not a threat to public safety.
It has to be communicated to us that it is more important than another case, then we can prioritize it. But we only have the information that's given to us when the case comes in the door. And oftentimes that detective is quite honestly getting that off his desk and putting it in our hands for the next step of the process. And if it's communicated to us that it's a priority, then we move it up in the queue.
This, this, this continues to be a theme where we're having to scale public safety because of increased inputs in the community. And what's really interesting is we can look at nine one one and figure out how we modernize for efficiencies, even EMS, those conversations are happening, modernizing for efficiencies. This is just getting you the resources to do the the testing and to do the job that you do. This is you need more resources and in order to get more resource, you need space and that's your biggest resource. Yeah, that's the biggest need. So it's a priority here. Please, I hope you understand and I hope the staff understands, we're vetting this out publicly, but we understand the priority and we understand the need and and we're going to get something across the finish line with it. Whatever this looks like, I'm confident that this commission will get something across the finish line for you.
Just to comment on Jeff's question. I think the fees we charge don't quite cover the operational costs of our, of our RFC. Whereas there's a subsidy from Sedgwick County taxpayers that that covers the any, any fees, any fees that aren't covered by someone else. We've got to cover that through property taxes. So I guess my point is is that there's not a way, there's not a way to get enough fees to cover capital investment. I think this is a capital investment discussion is going to be completely on our shoulders and the property taxes, taxpayers of Sedgwick County. I don't think there's a way to to hand some of that capital cost to other, other. to hand some of that capital cost to other, other organizations around, around the county that I'm aware of.
Right. I believe that's correct. Anything else? Rusty, any thoughts? Okay.
That's, that's all we had, son.
Okay. Tomorrow, nine AM, we have an executive session. That's a lengthier executive session plan, correct, Justin? So plan accordingly. Okay. See you tomorrow.